Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Chicago Board of Education's Finance and Audit Committee meeting. Today is October 24th, 2018. We are holding the meeting in the boardroom at 42 West Madison Street. I am Frank Clark, and on behalf of my fellow board members, I want to thank everyone for coming today. The order of our business will be an audit update, financial update, followed by public participation, and then we will move to adjourn. As always, courteous and civil behavior is expected from the audience. And with that, Madam Secretary, would you please lead us into the pledge?
Thank you, Mr. President. Please rise.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please state for the record the notice procedure for this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Notice of this meeting was posted on Monday, October 22nd, 2018, at least 48 hours before this meeting at the boardroom principal office, 42 West Madison Lobby, and on tpsboe.org. Thank you.
Thank you. The Finance Audit Committee meeting on Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, is hereby called to order. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Member Furlong?
Present.
Member Garza?
Present.
Member Ward?
Present.
And President Clark?
Present.
Four members present. We have a quorum, and I would also like to recognize Dr. Janice Jackson, our CEO, and Joseph Moriarty, our general counsel. Thank you.
Okay. I believe Jenny is going to do the audit and the financial update.
Good morning, President Clark, members of the board, CEO Jackson, and members of the public. My name is Jenny Huang Bennett, and I'm the CFO for CPS. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to present to you the first quarter fiscal year 2019 Finance and Audit Committee presentation. I'll start with the audit presentation, followed by a finance presentation from Carmelita Aflalo, our Director of Medicaid, and Tom Miller, our Director of Payroll. First, I'd like to take a moment to recognize members of the internal audit team who are with us this morning. Behind me are Angie Jacob, Amy Anderson, and Lynda Brown, who, along with the great internal audit team, have contributed to this first quarter update, as well as the great work that comes from the internal audit department. In this presentation, we have provided an update of the completed audits in the first quarter of fiscal year 2019, as well as the risk management assessment. In the first quarter, internal audit completed an audit of the vendor screening process and procedures that CPS has in place for vetting vendors prior to contract award. This was a request which arose out of the Integrated Facilities Management Project procurement process, and the overall observation from this audit was that a robust informal vendor due diligence process is needed, as well as a contract management policy that establishes vendor monitoring requirements post-contract award. These findings were developed in collaboration with procurement and a number of other departments, and procurement developed a management action plan to address these findings. The action plan includes the creation of a vendor management policy that clearly establishes ownership for vendor management responsibilities, as well as ongoing contracting -- contract monitoring. It also includes a creation of a due diligence checklist to ensure the screening process is uniformly applied and completed, and training for current staff to ensure that proper due diligence protocols are followed. The first of these findings are due in early November, and the short-term management action plan has a -- has a number of procedures that are due at that time. The procurement department has indicated that they are in the process of developing a contracting risk matrix to identify areas that need to be screened, and have indicated that they'll be able to meet the deadlines in the vendor screening process. In terms of an update on the school audits, in the first quarter fiscal year 19, 27 audits were completed. Of those audits, approximately 14 of them were conducted as principal transition review audits. These are audits that are requested by new principals who would have specifically asked for their -- certain areas of their schools to be audited. In addition to that, there was one limited scope audit, which was a requested audit of a specific school, as well as 12 full scope audits, which are part of our regular rotation of audits. Of those audits, approximately five demonstrated a satisfactory rating, which indicated that can -- internal controls and procedures of the school met best practices for various audit scope areas, which include cash handling, procurement, fixed assets, internal accounting, payroll, and among others. Another 14 of those schools had indicated a score of a needs improvement, which demonstrates that the school had certain areas of the audit that needed additional improvement, had high needs improvement findings, but that other areas had best -- met best practices. And then, in addition to that, another eight schools resulted in an unsatisfactory rating, which indicated that there were several testing areas where high risks were found. Based on the feedback from the board in previous audit committee meetings, we have developed in conjunction with Chief McDade, as well as the SSC, to create a process for follow-up for unsatisfactory audits. This includes a delineation of responsibilities of different departments in following up with schools, communicating with principals, the process for how to improve an unsatisfactory rating, and importantly, providing them with resources from the SSC to -- and financial specialists to be able to help them to improve and implement an action plan. This protocol was implemented with two schools initially in a pilot, and went very well, and since then, we've expanded it to all of the various schools that have unsatisfactory ratings. In addition to that, the internal audit team has also recently implemented follow-up procedures for all of the outstanding audits, recent audits that were done in fiscal year 18, and will continue to check with various departments and schools on management action findings and progress on those findings. Lastly, I wanted to provide you with an update of the risk assessment. CEO Jackson has charged not just internal audit, but the whole district, to consider the risks that the district faces, and to comprehensively and accurately highlight these risks in the risk management assessment. This process of identifying risks is a key part of the overall vision in all respects, the academic progress, the integrity, and financial stability, but in particular, it helps to bolster the part of the vision focused on integrity, because it provides to management, to the board, and to the public a document which outlines key risks that face the district. Importantly, a risk management assessment isn't just about outlining the challenges that a district faces, but also the opportunities that we have to make a difference for our kids. When we've actively implemented the changes to mitigate various risks outlined in the risk management assessment, we've also taken advantage of the opportunity to promote the academic progress of our students, to stabilize the district's finances, which provides resources to our students, and also to develop a process with integrity and transparency, which promotes stakeholder trust and is essential to our success. The risk management assessment is a document that needs to be collaborative, because it is about the overall risks facing the districts. Currently, we have conducted 31 departmental reviews, which includes interviews with over 50 different individuals, and these various departments interviewed are shown on the chart. Basically, we've interviewed at this point pretty much all of the departments at CPS. We've also begun the process of validating information that's come out of these interviews, and will continue to collaborate with management in developing the document, which is the risk management assessment, and presenting that to the board, as well as the Finance and Audit Committee meeting. And that concludes my update for the first quarter 2019 audit.
Board members, questions?
Yes, if I may, President Clark. Jenny, thank you. You clearly outlined what principals and schools need to do when they're unsatisfactory. How long of a wait time, or what's the process for a needs improvement when that is coded in the school?
It depends on the findings and the extent of the findings. A part of what we've also identified as a result of some of the unsatisfactory findings is that, you know, we need to implement better training as well for clerks and others on what our procedures are. And so, we are also in the process of doing that. That's something on the finance side that we've seen. We also working -- are also working on training on the payroll side, but it's a collaborative process. By way of the overall timing, it really depends on the nature of the unsatisfactory finding and, you know, what is it that the action plan is.
So, there's always follow-up to a needs improvement school as well?
Yes, there's follow-up that needs -- and it's really continuous improvement for all of us. I think, you know, some schools may have more findings than others.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
I'm Carmelita Aflalo, Medicaid Director in the Department of Finance. Thank you for allowing me to come before you to give you an update on the Medicaid program and to let you know what we're working on. I returned to the district about a year and a half ago to take on the Medicaid role, and in the time that I've been here, we have been focused on three very important things: enhancing and stabilizing revenues for Medicaid, strengthening our internal operations, and rebuilding our institutional knowledge over what Medicaid is for the district. So, what I'd like to do this morning is take you through very briefly what Medicaid is to Chicago Public Schools, and how we are trying to continue to move this program forward. As you may be aware already, Medicaid is a health insurance program for low-income individuals and their families. So, here at Chicago Public Schools, we generate revenue for these children who are enrolled in Medicaid and who receive medical services in our schools. As you are aware, in our IEPs, services are prescribed, and when that youngster is enrolled in Medicaid, there are reimbursements that we are able to generate for servicing these children who require supports. Some of the sources of revenue -- actually, there are two sources of revenue that we get into the system here. One is fee-for-service revenue, which is a rate that we generate revenue based on the delivery of medical services. So, every time a related service provider, who could be a nurse, an occupational therapist, a physical therapist, every time they deliver minutes to our children, if those children are enrolled in Medicaid, there is reimbursement that we will generate based on the minutes that these youngsters are served. So, the caveat for us, however, is that the Medicaid reimbursement only is generated for children who have IEP medically-related services. So, that's the important factor for us being able to generate revenue. As you can well imagine, in a system like Chicago Public Schools, there are a vast number -- there, in fact, are thousands of stakeholders who help us administer Medicaid here at the district. There are some very important ones, and I want to call out. We are engaged in administration, service, and enrollment. Those are the major buckets of Medicaid activity. Program enrollment happens through Dr. Fox's unit in the Department of Children's Health and Wellness. They engage families and students in terms of getting them enrolled in Medicaid. The services that our youngsters receive are managed through the Department of Diverse Learners, and so Liz Keenan and her staff are -- have people in every school, every network, who are servicing our children. And so, in the finance department, that's where the reimbursement is generated. That's where the idea of how can we generate more revenue for the children that we are already serving. And so, we look at enrollment trends, and we help support the enrollment effort, but we are looking at how can we change institutional operations? How can we rebuild the knowledge that everyone has so that we can all do those things that would generate revenue? So, I manage that piece, and basically, as the Medicaid Director, I corral, if you will, all of the stakeholders together toward that end of making sure children are enrolled, but from my side of the house, making sure that all possible reimbursements are maximized. So, as I mentioned earlier, our objectives are these three: to enhance and stabilize revenue, to strengthen our internal operations and accountability, as well as supporting the enrollment efforts that happen through Dr. Fox's office. So, some of the things that we have done in the last year have been to develop the more full understanding of what Medicaid is, the policy and the reimbursement process. We are rebuilding that institutional knowledge, making sure that everybody knows what it is and how they play a part in it. We are actively monitoring Medicaid policy, as you can well imagine, in this political environment, there are a lot of attacks on health insurance programs, and so, we are doing the best that we can to monitor any changes and trying to analyze how they would impact our schools. We are also very engaged in stakeholder and vendor management, and so, that's been a very key role for me in the last -- particularly in the last year. Compliance reporting is another thing that we have established, and use the reports compliance, meaning we are required to deliver services, how much of it did we deliver. And so, by making sure all the stakeholders know we are driving compliance, and by driving compliance, we then ensure that we don't experience what I would call revenue leakage. As you can well imagine, when an IEP service is required and it is delivered, if that's an IEP child who is enrolled in Medicaid, there's reimbursement that can generate. When we service children and we don't record it, that's a service that didn't happen, at least as far as everyone else is concerned. So, you can't document that the service was delivered, nor can you generate the reimbursement. So, compliance is a very important thing, and that is one of the factors that we do have control over. Just very briefly, there is a long Medicaid reimbursement process, and I won't go through all of the things that are here, though, but it does begin with enrollment, making sure all the children are enrolled, and we do support that activity, because we want to make sure that all children who have access -- and so, with the collaboration with Dr. Fox's office, we provide analysis that will help them to target specific children who have IEP services, and so, we make sure that they target those children to make sure that they are enrolled. We have a service provider who works with us, so that as related service providers, OTs, PTs, nurses, as they deliver services and record them in the system, our vendor helps us to submit claims. We filter out records that we know we won't be able to generate revenue against, and so, we filter and create a file that we submit to the state, and we generate reimbursement for it. Sometimes, when we submit claims, they are denied, and so, we have a process of reevaluating those claims that are denied and resubmitting them again to maximize revenue. So, at the very bottom of this process, it talks about how can we maximize revenues? It's by increasing enrollment. It's by ensuring services are captured. That's the compliance piece. It's also ensuring that there is billing success at the onset, making sure that we do all that we can from a documentation standpoint to ensure that billing will be successful. And then, it's securing the funds and enhancing resubmissions. So, again, it's a continual process that we go through to make sure that we maximize the revenues here. A very brief look at the financials. Last year, the Medicaid operation generated $37 million in reimbursement. However, there were some things that happened that were outside of our control, and these are the things that I want to share with you about how Medicaid is administered here and the impacts on that revenue. There are things that are outside of our control. State adjustments. Last year, we had $7.4 million of Medicaid revenue taken back by the state. That was taken back because what happens is that there are rate adjustments that occur annually, and so, they hadn't -- the state hadn't done adjustments in a few years, so we had multiple years come and hit our revenues last year, and they amounted to 7.4. The thing I want to make -- the point I want to make about the review of these rates that the state did, this is a regular occurrence that happens once financials are audited and finalized. They look at the rates that were charged, and then they look at our final cost, and then they make adjustments. And so, last year, we had multiple years adjusted. The other thing that is outside of the control of CPS is that there were lower rates of reimbursement. So, that will generate -- so, every time a service is delivered, there's a lower rate that's being used. Timing lags, and this is important. There is a four-month lag between the time that we deliver a service and the earliest that we will ever receive reimbursement for it. There's a lot of processing that goes in after an OT sees a child and delivers and records that time. There's going to be about four months before we will ever see that revenue. It's just the timing of pulling the data together, submitting it, and then the time that it takes for the state to review and then approve. So, it's about a four-month time lag. The other thing is there is this revenue recognition period, and last year, we ended up seeing a $2.4 million adjustment, a revenue, come in in the month of August. However, based on the timing of it, it had to be counted in FY '18 versus FY '19. So, what that did was make our FY '19 projection now $2.4 million behind because of the timing. Literally, if we'd gotten the payment a week later, it would have been counted in this fiscal year. So, again, that's a timing. There's not much that we can do to control that, but there are, again, as I mentioned, there are things in revenue that we do control, and that's compliance. So, for this budget, there are a number of things that we are putting in place and have put in place to try to enhance our compliance, and that is a focus on time capture, making sure every service provider knows that it's important that they record time, and that we're able to get into the system, either have an approval, depending on what kind of time it is, but making sure everybody understands their role and responsibility there. Maximizing the billing and claiming process, continuing to look at that process, making sure that we have active Medicaid numbers for the students who are enrolled, and making sure that the data lines up. And then, again, claiming all claimable costs, and so, we are always on the lookout for those things that will -- that we can claim appropriately, and so, that's our financial outlook for this current fiscal year. So, we do have a big process in terms of looking at compliance and making sure that we are tracking it, and just to give you a couple of facts from this page, our related service providers, again, OTs, PTs, nurses, all of those folks who service our children, we have a compliance target of 80%, which is reasonable and customary for these types of services delivered in schools, and last year, our average was 81%. We have more places that we can go and more growth that we can make there, but we are making the target and have exceeded it. Paraprofessional approvals, what -- people that we would consider our CICAs, our special ed classroom assistants, their compliance rate is 55% against an 80% target, and there's some work that we can do there. In particular, this particular group of individuals need an approval that happens after they submit their time. So, looking at how we can tighten up the approval process, and so, we have staff who are looking at that, who are working directly with schools to make sure that we support them so that everybody knows how to get time entered and approved as well. And so, as I mentioned, we have claims that are submitted, and we are continuing to review our outstanding denials to make sure that if there's anything that we can claim and resubmit, that we do so. Lastly, as we look at the horizon on Medicaid, there are some things that will and may impact Medicaid revenue. We just completed an RFP where we are looking at the Medicaid services that are administered here and the processing of claims, and so, we plan to come to the December board meeting with a vendor named who will help us to continue the processing and to improve and look at services and revenue sources that we may not have considered in the past. The other thing that we have just recently done is we've completed a perm audit, and so, basically, the system -- the school system is required to provide documentation for paid claims, and so, that information has just been submitted to CMS, and we are waiting -- that's the Centers of Medicaid and Medicare, and we're waiting for them to respond to what we've submitted. The other things that are -- that may impact Medicaid are policy changes. We are looking at changes that the federal government are suggesting in respect to public charge, and how that may affect immigration, and how that may specifically affect children of immigrants in our system. And so, we are looking to understand the impacts of that and, you know, the timing of if something like that was passed. The other thing is, you know, the state government always gives us new requirements, as you can well imagine, and so, we have a new requirement that is being required of us, and that is about referrals for audiology services. It's a new requirement that will be in effect for any claims that are submitted after January 1st, and so, we are standing up a process to make sure that we have obtained and that we obtain in the meantime all prescriptions for those types of services. The impact of this is, we don't have prescriptions for those services that are rendered for audiology and IEPs. Those will be claims that we will not be able -- they will be denied. We will not be able to submit them. So, I've given you a whole lot of the landscape of Medicaid, and so, I'll end here and allow you guys to ask questions if you have them.
Board members?
I have two. So, we'll just go one at a time, so I don't have you tied up. So, first is, we get a lot of feedback in special ed about the quantity, literally, quantity of documentation required to do everything. I understand that you either do the right documentation, or you don't get reimbursed. So, it's not a either-or, you got to do it. Do you really think we have the support in place to help the CICAs to both deliver the service and then flip around the documentation with speed to be able to -- and I say this because of the low success rate they're having. You've set a higher target rate of 80%. So, that's the first question. So, do you think we have sufficient resources to help the CICAs turn the documentation around while they're, you know, in the course of delivering services?
It's difficult to say if we have the right number of resources when there are probably some things that we can -- some low-hanging fruit that we can attend to to ensure that compliance is greater than 55%.
Yeah.
So, let me say this. Right now, I have a staff member who literally calls schools. We target -- we target those who have the greatest number so that we get the, you know, I'll say the most bang for our buck, but we literally are training people during the beginning of school, and so, there was training. However, there is another requirement that we're finding out that's impacting that, and that is the requirement of a digital signature. That digital signature is required for the approver. Unlike other related service providers, CICAs need approval for their time, and so, that digital signature is the approver's ability to approve their time, and that's -- that I see as kind of a cog -- not a cog in the wheel, but as a funnel, if you will, that may be impacting that 55%. So, I'm not sure if I can answer about the proper amount of staffing, but we are trying to use the individuals who support CICAs, the Liz Keenan's office, we're working with district reps who work with them, so we're trying to make sure the messaging is out there and the support is out there. Liz Keenan also has a compliance person who makes these calls as well. So, I'm not able to say about staffing, but I can certainly say that there are some things that we can do that are well within our purview to improve that rate.
What happens first on that control? The approval for the CICA's time or the documentation evidence that's needed?
Document -- and let me be clear. Documentation requirements are out of ISB, are out of IDEA. So, there -- so, I want to be clear that the requirements to document services are not a Medicaid requirement, although we require it. The requirement to document services happens because of the IDEA, and, you know, so, there is a requirement to document. So, whatever that requirement is, we accept that same documentation requirement as part of what is necessary for Medicaid. And I'm sorry, I didn't get the last bit of your question.
Yeah, I think that was the -- and then the second one was, this is not a search to terminate employees, but no, no, here's my question. I just wanted you to hear that first, so you didn't think that's what I was trying to do.
Okay, that's the caveat.
Have you thought about putting, in measurement of performance, putting this compliance accuracy target in there so that it would -- what I'm trying to get the CICAs to do is force them to say, "The reason I can't get this done accurately is because one, two, three," which would let you go right at the source of the issue, meaning, you know, get to this 80% level. So, if that was one of the standards, one of them, in the standards of how you evaluate their performance, I'm just thinking the quality of the feedback would get really good, because they want to hit 80%, right? So, if they can't, then they'll probably help us with what the one or two things are that are the impediments.
And I won't presume to know what the CICA's day requires and what is required of them to do the documentation. I do understand that there is an IT component that is a challenge for CICAs, in that, at the local school, they don't have a computer assigned to them like we do, and so, they have to find a place to do their service captured. So, that's the first little hurdle, and maybe a major hurdle, for timely submission of documentation. So, they have to find a place to do so, and perhaps there is a computer at the school where they can do it. They can't do it between who they're supporting, so that means they have to do it either before or after. So, I'm not sure what the labor requirements are for them and the requirements of their job, but I believe it is required that they record their time. So, I believe, again, the answer may be further engagement of them and the people who support them, providing statistics that will allow everybody to know how they are tracking, and certainly, not a job reduction, it would be making sure that they have the support to do what they need to do, and then furthermore, making sure that our IT system supports the approvers, who, again, have to have this digital signature, which has to be refreshed every year. So, if I was -- if I had a digital signature last year and I didn't know it expired, I need another one, which means I won't be able to -- I need to refresh it. So, there are some IT things that we can do.
I bet you're on to the answer. I mean, in there is that the gap between 55 and 80 is one -- are some of those answers.
Yep. I believe it's IT and a training answer to that. I really do.
Hopefully, the CICAs will give you the kind of feedback we need to make sure that we know the reasons they
I believe it's IT and a training answer to that. I really do.
Hopefully, the SICAs will give you the kind of feedback we need to make sure that we know the reasons they can't get to 80 or higher. Obviously, you want higher, but.
And this is a, and one thing, this is new for the district. We've only been doing this for about a year now in earnest. So it is about, again, reestablishing or establishing institutional knowledge about what this is, why it's important, and why we must do it. So we've got a little work there to make sure the message is out and that we have systems that will support them to do the work that we're asking them to do.
Thanks.
I have an additional question.
Go ahead.
The revenue in fiscal year 18 was 30.2 million?
Yes, that was the answer.
What does that represent as far either the number of students that it services or a percentage of our total student population?
Great question. The students who generated that 30 million that you indicate there are our IEP students who have Medicaid, and that's about 52,000 students.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And if I may, as a follow-up to what Mark was asking, at the school level, is the contact person or the person that would, would be the go-to person? Is that the case manager? Is it the principal?
For SICA compliance?
Yes.
There may be different people depending on the school. It could be a case manager, it could be the principal approving, it could be, you know, whoever the designee is there at the local school. And so it varies from school to school.
So the approval signature that you're talking about could be the teacher?
It could be.
It could be the principal?
Yes.
And it could be the case manager?
Because this would be someone who supervises and is reasonably aware of what their activities are. That's who has to approve that time.
Okay, I was just trying to get an idea of roles and responsibilities.
It's handled differently depending on, I guess, the workload at each school and who would be in position to be able to approve that time because they have knowledge of the work.
Who is your contact person when you want to find out things about what's happening at a particular school?
In a particular, well, because I have a compliance person who actually calls schools and talks to them, she would probably, her name's Zinja Vaughn, she would probably be my contact because she works compliance. And so she has the contacts and has been working with schools over the last few years. We work very close with Dr. Keenan's office because it's through her connectivity and the staff that she has in the, in the network offices that we try to do our work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, sort of a question that aggregates everything that we've discussed. I think our focus on compliance has sharpened considerably since you've taken on this assignment. It does sound, though, like there are numerous aspects of this that are not directly in your control but directly impact our bottom line. And our bottom line is trending down. It's trending down for all the reasons you've already identified, and I don't have to repeat that. So I know that, you know, your organization, your focus under Dr. Jackson's direction, you know, it's several millions of dollars of gap, and obviously, we want to close that. You said so many important things. For example, we are only reimbursed for students that are on, that are receiving an IP and then whatever.
And are Medicaid enrolled.
Right, that combination. That's an issue in and of itself. It's a very narrow focus. The compliance aspects of it, because you really are at, you had two numbers. You had 80% as a target and you had hit 81%, but then you had a subgroup where they were, they were barely making 55%. And, you know, obviously, you're focused on that, and some of those problems you've also talked about in your explanation. It is, I think, my personal and professional experience that nothing makes this compliance issue actually improve than the focus, focus, the very focus that you're talking about. We can't let the mechanical things inside of schools, the fact that there are different people that have signature authority is questionable, and I know you're going to be looking at that because some ways, that has to be standardized so that we're not chasing, trying to figure out who's the person that has to sign off. You don't actually have full responsibility over all the documentation that's to be filled out, but you have to have it in order to get a reimbursement. That's maybe one of your biggest hurdles, if it's coming from another agency. I believe that's what you said.
Yes.
You know, you have to have it, but we're not actually the ones putting those documents together inside of CPS. Is that correct?
Correct.
I'm not sure what the opportunity is to close that gap. Would you just elaborate on that for just a moment?
Closing the gap on how we get more?
No, we're not getting the documentation that we need in a timely fashion because it's coming from another agency, and yet we have to submit that documentation in order to get reimbursed.
Well, the documentation that I'm talking about in terms of compliance, and we're talking about the records, the service records that a service provider is putting in the system for a child. Those records are required because of the mandate for special education in schools, which is the IDEA. And, and so it's those requirements. However, a child has to meet all of those requirements for us to be able to submit it to Medicaid. But it's not Medicaid who is requiring us to do things in a certain way. It's the mandate of what it takes to get a special ed service in a school. So, so that, so there's not a gap for us. I just wanted to be clear that it is required in a certain way. And once the service provider does that, we can then take that in and submit for reimbursement. So the higher goal and the higher standard is what IDEA requires.
Just continue with the sharp focus I know that you're already bringing to this task. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Tom Miller, the Director of Payroll Services. Honored to speak with all of you today. It's been a pleasure meeting you all over the last couple of weeks. I want to start out with a, I'm learning how to use this, apparently. Am I doing wrong, Daniel? Thank you. So an overview, basically, the function or the goal of the payroll services department is to ensure that all of our employees get paid, and they get paid as accurately as possible and on time based on the data that we receive from various departments throughout the organization. Another function, which is not truly a payroll function, but is a large contributor to our product, is the timekeeping function of the organization. That responsibility is to accurately put into hours into the timekeeping system and ensure that those hours are presented to payroll so that we can properly process the pay. Once that pay is submitted to payroll, we have dozens upon dozens of processes that we run to ensure that everything calculates correctly so that the final pay is correct for our employees. Some of the measures of our success include 188 manual checks. That was the entire population of checks that we actually had to process outside of the system in order for employees to get pay on time. You can see that percentage is less than 200ths of a percent. Also, a major function of our department is making sure we're compliant with not only federal and state regulations, but with our partners at MEABF and CTPF. In my tenure, we have never been late on a payment to CTPF or to the federal or state government. Quick overview of my department, we're relatively compact, put into five different teams. I have a customer service team that speaks to our general public about general questions, problems. I have a timekeeping central team that really is the liaison to all the central office employees to make sure that their time is entered correctly. I have a compliance department. They're the backend. They pay the taxes, they pay the unions, they pay the vendors, and our pension funds. I also have a time and attendance correction team. They not only assist all the departments with any Kronos-related issues, but they really get into the processing of payroll to ensure that time that has been entered incorrectly is corrected so that the final paycheck is correct, is correct. We have a small management team, myself and two managers that oversee these teams. And then my system processing team, it's a very small team, but they're the ones that actually run all the different procedures in the PeopleSoft payroll system to produce that final paycheck. I call them fun facts about payroll. FY '19, we produced 976,111 checks in our process. That's the number I use to estimate what the percentage of the manual checks was. 99% of those payments are direct deposit because we have opened up employee self-service for the direct deposit. We put no restrictions on how many bank accounts an employee can have. In this day and age, it is not uncommon for people with kids in college to set up a separate account for each child, and we're able to distribute those funds to them. And it's really gotten a lot of positive feedback from employees. As far as processing pay, in reporting what our output is, it's really important that we can distinguish what we're paying for what. So we have 250 different earn codes to distinguish whether we're paying for coaching, professional development. A lot of times, we get requests for benefit day usage. So we have all the different earning codes to distinguish those categories of pay. Additionally, you know, we're a very large organization, and there are employees that have to pay child support, student loans, bankruptcies. So my compliance team handles over 2,700 active nourishments every pay period. The final one is, once you get in payroll, you really don't leave payroll. So I have 24 staff, and between us, we've been there for 429 years. So when we get into the processing of payroll, we're the second-largest employer in the city. Sometimes I think we're the first, but I haven't been able to prove that yet. We process payroll every two weeks. It takes my team three days to do all the different procedures to get those checks out. And we do it in such a way that teachers are able to see their checks on Monday, and non-teachers are able to see their checks on Tuesday. That gives them three days before the payday to alert us of any issues. We literally run 55 system-related audit reports when ensuring the data is accurate. We also have 20 or 30 ad hoc reports, depending on what pay period we're in. You know, if there was a holiday, I make sure that people are putting the holiday in and not reg time, things like that. Other reports that we do are high earnings to make sure that only the highest-paid employees in this organization are on that report, Dr. Jackson.
Thank you.
We make sure that people are not getting paid more hours than they should. So a teacher shouldn't get more than 62.5 hours. I shouldn't get more than 80. Time sometimes does get submitted after someone's actually been terminated. And we scrutinize weekend hours to make sure that the people that are getting paid for Saturdays are actually scheduled to work on a Saturday. Every, every pay period, there are 16 to 1,800 exceptions that come across the time in labor. So that time and attendance correction team I reported on, there's four of them. They go through that every Thursday. They clean those up by 3:00 in the afternoon. We're able to rerun our reports and rerun our reports and rerun our reports until all the reports are clean before we finally shut down our payroll. Obviously, as I already mentioned, after the payroll is confirmed, we make sure that everybody that's owed the money gets the money, the banks, the unions, the pensions. My department is a custodian of $2.5 billion of the budget, and we make sure that every dime of that goes to the right place. Recently, in the last six months, we've reached out to approximately five large school districts across the country to see, do we have similar problems? Do we have unique problems? How are we doing based on how they're doing? Surprisingly, our, our problems are not unique. Every school district has an issue with substitute pay, timekeeping issues. We're actually ahead of the curve on timekeeping because we found school districts that actually use time cards that people write and just submit. There's actually no control as to whether the time is correct or not. So we're going to continue that relationship with these other school districts and get their feedback and give our feedback. We recently helped one school district make a decision about purchasing the Kronos system based on our feedback about our experience. Upcoming projects that we plan to implement to improve. I mentioned timekeeping, although it's not payroll's function. We are a big stakeholder, and we've reached out to many departments across the organization. Two minutes? Okay, sorry. So we're working with talent, IT, nutrition, security. We're all together going to, you know, come to a common ground so that we are more consistently submitting time across the district. And finally, in our PeopleSoft system, we're going to give it a tune-up. A lot of the rules have not been looked at in a while. I think we can find some efficiencies there. Now, because Dr. Jackson had eight minutes, I'm going to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Board members? Just one. How do we, what standard do we look at? Is there an industry standard that tells us that our payroll system, our payroll practices are best-in-class? You know, or something else?
I would say the benchmarking has given us a lot of insight as to some of the things that we are doing are the right way to do it. Also, the fact that we don't have the issues of compliance with state and federal and the pension boards. I think I have a pretty clean machine set up. We follow the same process every pay period. And when we see an issue, we address it immediately. So aside from that, I don't really have any benchmarks because we're kind of a unique industry.
Okay. Thank you very much, Thomas. Now let's proceed with the today's public comment segment. Madam Secretary, please share the rules for public comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to note for the record that registration for the Finance and Audit Committee meeting was held between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:30 AM this morning. Individuals who registered to speak will have two minutes to comment, and I will call the speaker, speakers in order of registration. This meeting will conclude after the last person who has signed in to speak has spoken or at 10:00 AM. Whichever occurs first, and when called, please state your name. I will proceed by calling the first speaker, and there is only one speaker on the list, Mr. President. I'll call up Nancy Brant, please. I'll call up Nancy Brandt, please.
Thanks. I'm Nancy Brandt from the League of Women Voters of Chicago. In connection with our ongoing study of CPS's fiscal '19 budget and financial status, the League is making two requests for you, the board, and the administration to consider. The first is in regard to the budgeted program expansions contained in the first few pages of the budget. We count 17 of them, and we know that for each of them, there is a large group of advocates especially interested in the progress of that particular program. To that end, we are including in the packets, I'll distribute, a simple chart and a sample chart that contains a six-month and a 12-month progress report for each. The administration would undoubtedly have its own method of reporting. We know that this kind of transparency and accountability would be reassuring to your many publics, and we think the board might be interested in such progress reports as well. Our second request concerns the evidence-based funding spending plan that each district had to submit to the State Board of Education no later than September 30th. The state superintendent has encouraged all districts to share that report with the public. The League was one of the organizations that has fought vigorously over many years, even decades, to achieve this new school aid formula. And so therefore, we are interested in how the new evidence-based funding is going to be used, both in our district and throughout the state. So we hope you will consider our request.
Thank you, Ms. Brandt.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comments, board members' questions? Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? Someone second it for me.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.